...into the First Amendment to the contract by and between the city and the Chattanooga Metropolitan Airport Authority in substantially the form attached to manage the authority's pension and certain employee benefits and as more particularly specified in the First Amendment.
I see no questions on this item. C, please.
A resolution authorizing the Director of Human Resources to enter into group insurance agreements in substantially the forms attached with the Chattanooga-Hamilton County Air Pollution Control Bureau, the Enterprise Center Incorporated, the Carter Street Corporation, D B A Chattanooga-Hamilton County Convention and Trade Center, and the Chattanooga Board of Directors of the Fire and Police Pension Fund to offer coverage for certain employee benefits as specified in the agreements.
Any questions on this item? I see none, which makes it a very short beginning to the agenda session. There are no questions. I will go ahead and adjourn to our Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting.
Order Public Works and Transportation Committee meeting? Okay, um, thanks guys. All right. Let's do Transportation first, Mr. Bailey. And we'll have the first reading, Ordinance Number 6A, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a portion of the 5100 block of Genesis Lane in, of Genesis Lane to allow for creation of green space and parking as detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
Councilman, any questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman, Chairwoman. We deferred this just in case that we had some additional questions that they could be answered to clarify the wording. Are you, under the impression, has that been cleared up as far as you know?
I am. I spoke with one of the entities that I happened to see on Friday, and then I understand from my staff that the other entity was actively involved in the whole process.
So we're good?
I believe everybody's good.
Great. Good to move forward then. Thank you, Madam.
You good? All right, let's go to ordinance, let's see, resolutions. And let's go to 7H and I.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement, project number T-18001801 with MBSC Black Creek LLC for Upper River Gorge Black Creek Phase 8, and to accept the costs and fees associated with the procurement and services of the licensed geotechnical engineer to inspect and approve designs for a new city street.
Councilman Henderson? Okay, let's go to I.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement, project number T-18001807 with T. Jean Edwards Incorporated for the home service office project and to accept a contribution in the amount of $30,806 towards the cost of sidewalk and curb and gutter implementation.
Thank you. You have any questions, Councilwoman Burris? No, I don't really. I think it's a great project. Hey, talk a little bit about this contribution. It's supplementing, how, what's the total cost?
It's, that is the total.
That is the total cost?
This is, this is a situation where the requirement was to build the sidewalk through the development. We had required it in locations very nearby, so we were uncomfortable waiving the requirement. But it was very challenging because there's a, there's a water, there's a water conveyance across the property. And so we gave them the option of doing this instead, and they were agreeable.
That's great. That is a gorgeous project. Have you been out there?
I haven't.
It is beautiful. And so we thank them very much for that. Thank you, Blythe.
Thank you.
Let's go to Public Works. Where is? Let me make sure I've got that. Oh, gosh, yes. All right, sorry, wrong page. Yes. P, please, next week.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement, project number T-18001806 with 1400 Chestnut LLC for 1400 Chestnut Street Apartments located at 1400 Chestnut Street, and to accept a contribution towards the cost of five pedestrian light poles, luminaries, conduits, and installation in the amount of $12,648.65.
Councilman Oglesby, any questions? All right, I think you're up again in just a minute. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to enter into a partnership agreement, project number T-18001808 with Wise Properties TN LLC for 1920 Chestnut Street Apartments located at 1920 Chestnut Street, and to accept a contribution towards the cost of six pedestrian light poles, luminaries, conduits, and installation in the amount of $14,818.38.
Councilman? Okay. Thank you. Let's move on. R.
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Transportation to renew the services agreement in substantially the form attached with Census America Incorporated for the traffic infraction detection and enforcement program for one year.
Tell us about that.
This is a renewal of our contract with Census that does our, our speed enforcement, our photo speed enforcement program. And this is a limited scope of services from what they originally did. You may remember that the state passed a law almost two years ago. And this only includes the locations that are, that are permitted by that law. One speed camera in the S-curves, and then two red light cameras and two mobile speed vans that the police department uses. This is just a renewal of the contract.
Any questions or concerns? Yes, Councilman Smith?
You may not be the one to answer this, but I'm curious. When somebody does receive a ticket in this area, in the S-curves, where it is still legal to have the cameras, is that, are those tickets kept by the police department to collect the fees? Or they, does Census maintain that? Who maintains those records?
I should probably go back and refresh my memory. I have a pretty good idea, but if, I mean, let me make sure I understand that process.
Yeah.
One of the things that Census does for us is process that and send it out, but there's certain requirements that it goes through to make sure it's vetted and we're sending.
Right, because they actually look at it and they're supposed to anyways.
They've got a system that, you know, verifies the license plate and all those kinds of things. But I'll, I'll confirm the process and get back with you.
Yeah, just curious. I'd like to know. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Thank you very much, Mr. Bailey. Have you gotten a lot of tickets, Councilman Smith? Are they keeping records on you? All right, let's go to Public Works. Good afternoon. Good, well, let's start with Resolutions 7D today. Madam Clerk?
A resolution to rename the 1100 block of Cleveland Avenue to the 1100 block of Lincoln Parkway as referenced in case number 2018PW01.
Councilman, any questions?
Yes, ma'am. It need to be, I think, worded a little different. And it looks, they have to the 1100 block of Lincoln Parkway. That shouldn't read like that, should it? 1100 block of Cleveland Avenue to...
So, so Mr. Councilman, you asked if it could be changed to Lincoln Park Lane?
Yes, that's the second part. That's, some constituents said they would rather Lincoln Park Lane.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to make that, when we, during the vote, to make that amendment to it. But is that read correctly, that from the 1100 block of Cleveland Avenue to the, it's gonna, the borders of the block?
The resolution is to change the, the 1100 block of Cleveland Avenue. The 1100 block is only one block, there's only one block range on that side of DeBuch Yard. Isn't that right, Bill?
Got it.
That, that is the 1100 block, so there are no, there is...
Borders.
The other side of DeBuch Yard is the 1400 block, I believe. Or there's another block range on the, on the other side of DeBuch Yard, but this is the only section in Lincoln Park that would be that. And then you had asked to change it to Lane, and that would be a motion at council.
Yes, sir.
So, Councilman, you'll make that amendment tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Changing it way to Lane?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on that?
No, that's it.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to execute an agreement with Hamilton County for the 2018 biannual GIS imagery, ortho-photography update for an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Any questions, concerns? Okay, Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing year two of three for on-call modeling and floodplain analysis services from LDA Engineering, CDM Smith, STANTEC, AECOM, AMEC Foster Wheeler, BWSC, Fulgham Macendo, and HDR to enter into eight one-year blanket contracts with the, with these professional firms, subject to one remaining annual renewal option for professional services estimated at $650,000 total annually for all eight professional firms for use by all departments.
So I have a question about that. We're approving now, should it be approved, for you to enter in the future, eight one-year contracts?
No, this is, this is for the remaining annual renewal option. These, these are eight one-year blanket contracts that will have a one-year annual renewal option.
In English, what does that mean?
We're gonna contract with these folks for $650,000. Doesn't necessarily mean that we'll spend that amount, but we'll have these folks under contract this, for a period of one year with a renewal option next year that will renew automatically, I believe.
So I guess my question is, will council see that again for the renewal?
Council will see that again, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Councilman Gilbert?
Were we, did, did we finish the FEMA study in the area of the Creek, South Creek? No, FEMA did a, did a study, and I never hear anything about the results, or they still, are they still doing it? On floods?
Um, Bill, would you, are you familiar with what the? I think I, I want to make sure I understand which, we had, we've had a couple of different studies that we've conducted related to flood analysis. This is related to on-call modeling, but, so it's unrelated to the FEMA study.
I know. I, it's triggered me, when I seen this, it triggered me about talking about flood again. I just want to ask, was there an update on FEMA?
Okay.
Study?
Perhaps the, it might be the Corps of Engineers contract, not the FEMA study, to do the flood analysis, which they're still, they're still doing.
So they're still working on it?
Can, can we come back to you with an update of where we're at with that Corps of Engineers study, which I believe is the, the study that you've asked about?
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll come back to you with a response.
Do you have any problem with this particular item?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing year two of a four-year term for the on-call blanket contracts for geo-environmental consulting and construction materials testing services. Contract number E16007301 with the following firms: Geo Services LLC, KS Ware and Associates LLC, S&amp;M E Incorporated, STANTEC Consulting Services Incorporated, TerraCon Consultations Incorporated, and Thompson Engineering Incorporated. Based on the three services categories of geotechnological construction materials testing and environmental services that each consultant qualified for, the renewal of the six one-year blanket contracts for professional services estimated at $400,000 total annually for all six professional firms for use by all departments.
Questions, concerns? So I have a question. It, it has to do with, with both of these. How do you, because we get these questions. How do you differentiate about what comes up for a blanket contract on a, on purchasing at the end of a council meeting? And these?
So you're talking about, like, something that might be project-specific, that would be a...
Why, why do we see these two, the one previous and this, here like this, as opposed to on purchasing at the end of a council meeting a hundred and something dollars, a hundred and something thousand dollars for a blanket contract?
Okay, that's a good question for Bill, or, yeah, Bonnie?
Yeah.
Councilwoman, the basic differentiation is that if, uh, the majority of the contracts that are coming for you through resolution are typically either a construction bid process, a, a request for qualification process if it's a professional service, or it's within their discretion to, if it's over $25,000, to bring it to you through a resolution request. So they have the ability to do that. Does that generally answer your question?
It generally answers the question. We've been, the council's been looking at how things happen. So I'm gonna defer to my colleague here who is making a study of this, because the council's trying to understand why some things, why things come in certain ways. We understand requests for RFQs and RFPs, we understand that. However, when you're doing something like this, that are continual one-year renewals, why would you do it this way as opposed to next year? Or, or whenever it's ready to come back up again, ask for a one-year renewal? How do we keep tabs on the fact that, that they're doing what we're paying them to do? As, we assume that, it, it assumes here that this will be continued as opposed to it being reviewed and then continued.
So this mechanism allows us to, to have a qualified contractor perform work based on their area of expertise. They would be selected for projects that may not necessarily need to go out for bid, but they may need either engineering support or to, to do a small design project that may not necessarily meet qualifications to go out for bid, but they would require engineering services to either support mechanical, electrical, or civic, civil engineering. These projects, both on-call modeling for floodplain analysis and geotechnical consulting. One, for instance, recently, there was a levy that broke in Lookout Valley. There was a breach in the levy where it, it contained a 10-acre lake, and we were able to contact S&amp;M E who had, who is one of our contractors for geotechnical work. We were able, we had them on contract, didn't necessarily have to do an emergency purchase or get a PO, but we had them available. They came out immediately that evening, and were able to do the geotechnical work and provide some feedback to us very quickly. So that wasn't necessarily a capital project where we asked them to design something, we just needed their support. So we keep various people, various contractors and consultants on contract to be able to do that, to have that mechanism for quick on-call or, uh, quick design services or, uh, quick engineering consultant feedback beyond our capacity or ability to perform the service in-house.
I understand on-call, and any government would have to have that. I completely understand that. It's, it's the automatic renewals at our option. Does that not obviate any other companies from being able to come in and bid?
So we, we typically try to, try to pre-qualify several contractors, and we do, we do it this way so that we have, we give other people an option. And I realize that this is six one-year blanket services. But you'll notice, all of these are, um, engineering consulting services, and we really do try to look for, first of all, the, the best qualified folks, but also to use a variety of companies. And we, I think we do a pretty good job of representing many different consulting firms in town in our blanket contracts where they have areas of expertise. But I understand your question.
Yeah.
I think it's just important that we have the best qualified individuals on contract for the types of services that we need. I don't think it would be in our best interest to keep every consultant firm available, which may, you know, bring us to your question about how do we rotate those types of consulting firms? But I think here is a good example where we have two types of contracts, and we have represented here, you know, several different engineering firms that we would select from.
That's a wonderful point. Councilwoman, I think your original question was, is it eight years? So the length of the contract, I just want to specify, because the wording is a little bit confusing. It's, it's eight contracts for one-year terms. So it's not as long of a commitment as was originally specified. So that might help alleviate some of your concerns.
Yeah, I, I think the wording needs to be a little more clear in this.
Yeah, we'd be happy to take a look at the resolution language in the future, just so that it's not as confusing as to the number of firms versus the number of years. We appreciate that feedback.
Right, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Justin, you, you guys do a great job, and you have, uh, great people on board. This, I think, looks like what you're not intending, and perhaps I was asking my question wrong, but I think the chief got it, and so thank you. Madam Clerk? Let's go on to next week. 6D.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a 10-foot-wide sewer easement beginning at the south line of the 1,000 block of Fernway Road, then southwardly 140, 104 and 1/10 feet, tax map number 127HG001 and 002, as detailed on the attached map.
Thank you. This is for next week, so we'll make sure that Councilwoman Mitchell gets a chance to review it. E.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a 5-foot-wide sewer easement beginning at a point in the northwest line of Lot 61, amended plat of Lots 37 to 64, including block Dallas Heights, Plat Book 15, Page 38, ROHC, thence southeastwardly, some 156 feet to the south line of said lot, tax map number 127HF055, as detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
Again, for Mr. Mitchell to see before next week. F.
An ordinance closing and abandoning a 20-foot-wide sewer easement beginning 63 feet west of Manhole S-138J760, thence northwest, some 51 feet to Manhole S-138J766, tax map number 138JA0013.02, as detailed on the attached map, subject to certain conditions.
So tell me about that. And I, I study them greatly, yes. So you're abandoning a sewer easement? Okay. So, so Bill, what's the project? Have we approved the project yet? Where is it located? Oh, okay. I know where that is. I know exactly where that is. Okay. So we're abandoning so they can do what they need to do? Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the approval of change order number one for Civic Engineering and Information Technologies Incorporated for professional services relative to contract number S-09008401 North St. Elmo Stormwater Improvements Project, CEI Services, for an increased amount of $109,775 for a revised contract amount not to exceed $901,887.
Councilman Oglesby? You good? Okay, Madam Clerk, okay.
A resolution authorizing the award of contract number M-17006201 to Tri-State Roofing Contractors of Chattanooga, Tennessee replacement roofing system for the Lindsay Street Building in the amount of $42,625, with a contingency amount of $5,000 for an amount not to exceed $47,625.
Councilman Burr?
We're okay, we're good.
You're good?
Yes.
L, Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the Administrator for the Department of Public Works to accept reimbursable funds for the recycling rebate grant from the Tennessee Department
from the Tennessee Department of Conservation in the amount of $32,211.
Any questions? Yeah, we'll let you get the money. Hello, welcome. Good, welcome aboard, glad to have you with us. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the second payment of five payments to Hamilton County GSI relative to GSI addressing, addressing for fiscal year 2019 with future compensation to be negotiated on an annual basis as noted in the city-county addressing MOU dated May 19, 2006 for an amount not to exceed $68,100.
Questions? Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the renewal for green infrastructure stay-on-volume bank program services for year two of two with W M Whitaker, C D M Smith, and Stan Tech to enter into three one-year blanket contracts with these professional firms, 2018 through 2019, for professional services estimated at $300,000 for an annual total for all three professional firms for use by all departments.
Any questions? Is this out of what budget? Because we haven't approved that. Okay. Madam Clerk?
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Public Works to accept reimbursable funds for the education and outreach grant from the Tennessee Department of Environmental and Conservation in the amount of $28,916.
Any questions about accepting money? That sounds good. Anything else to come before Public Works and Transportation? Councilwoman Henderson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Justin, you mentioned something about the levy breach in Lookout Valley a few minutes ago. And I just wanted to tell you, the Public Works crew did a great job of getting out there and working through the night and taking care of that situation before it developed into anything a whole lot more serious for those residents downfield, downstream from, from that. Y'all, y'all did a, y'all did a great job.
Anything else? If not, we'll adjourn to planning and zoning.
I'd like to call it over today's economic and community development. All right, thank you. Today, we will have a discussion on the proposed food truck ordinance. So, Mr. Attorney?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. While the, and I wouldn't call it a presentation, this, just a number of slides to, to give you what we want to do here today, which is an update. As you all can recall, last year, last fall, we got a number of requests, and not only from council members, but also from citizens, who actually submitted a petition saying they wanted the city to explore a review of the food truck or the mobile food unit ordinance. And so, we, we called together, convened a group of stakeholders in the community. That included, in fact, I see Jim Williamson, River City. He actually was a part of the group that helped draft the, the original ordinance that was drafted in 2013. Also Dallas and Charlie and others who were part of that, including students from U T C and others in the community. And Jonathan Sussman, who is in the back from C dot, who worked tirelessly on this along with Keith Reisman, looking at ordinances and codes from throughout the country to see what would be the best fit. And so what we wanted to do today is essentially give you an update on where we are, making sure that we're headed down the right path before we take a deep dive into the regulations. Just as a quick overview of where we are now currently, let me go to that first slide. One of the reasons that people came to us was that the code as it currently stands is pretty restrictive. You can only use it for, on, on private property within certain zones. Now, if you wanted to use it for community-wide events or special events and things of that nature, certainly that could happen. But it says specifically, you can't use it on city streets. They did create a great permit process. It also has the other inspections or requirements that you would expect from a mobile food unit. So the health department has to sign off on things like that. But again, as you know, since 2013, a lot has changed in the food truck industry. You have places like Austin, you have places like Portland that are doing a lot of great work, and it's truly an industry. And so we wanted to look at those ordinances and come back with a couple of proposed changes. And so one of the things we did was, we said, hey, this could work better if it's allowed on city streets, one. We also made some, some changes that includes form-based code that's changed since 2013. The, the, but what we strive for, I think, and the group will tell you with this, is to do something that is just simple, right? And so one of the easiest things we, we thought we could do is delegate some of the regulations around what's a proper place or the most appropriate place to have food trucks to C dot. And what I mean by the most appropriate place is, we're thinking about creating food zones. So instead of just saying any particular public street, it would be a designated area that's vetted based on the criteria that C dot, working with other city partners, would determine. As an example, one of the first places suggested is Miller Park. With the infrastructure that's going on there, it makes sense that that would be a place where food trucks be placed. But Councilwoman Coonrod, who's the sponsor of this legislation, she also suggested Glass Street. So while downtown and Miller Park could be an area, we also know that there are neighborhoods and areas in your districts that you might want to consider for food trucks as well. So as we're going through this, as Jonathan and Blythe and the team are drafting these regulations, we welcome your suggestions for places in your districts that you would want to see those, those food trucks take place. The other thing we did was to, to accommodate that is, we want to give, once the ordinance is adopted, give about sixty days of that for them to complete those regulations, although they're really close, including completing the application, again, they're really close with that as well, to, to complete this process. The other thing you'll see in this ordinance that's different from the current code is, it's a stepped-up regulatory component when it comes to fire. That was really missing a little bit with this last, with this current version. And so the Fire Department, and I'm so sorry I didn't give them a shout-out, they, they did a great job as well as contributing to, to this process. Now, the, the process itself wouldn't really change, except, you know, you would still go to the treasurer's office to submit that original application. But when it comes to the zone itself, you would work with C dot to get that, to get that, to get that done. From an enforcement standpoint, certainly, L D O and C P D would all look for those permits that the food, the mobile food unit provider would have in their unit. If they don't have it, of course, they'll be cited, just like any other person that, or business that is in violation of the ordinance. So some of the outstanding items that we have now, we want to complete the regulations. We want to also make sure we have a communications plan that allows for any food truck vendors. And, and by the way, I know Jonathan talked with a number of operators in, in the, in the city. We want to complete the application, we want to look at these zones and any potential zones that you all might have in your districts. We also wanted to, a lot of questions came up about, well, how does this work if we have a zone where a number of playpeople or operators want to use the same location? We thought about using a reservation system, we, we thought about those things. We explored that because that's what they have in other cities. But, you know, this industry is growing, this is a market that we think we'll have to just monitor a little bit to see what happens. And if that demand comes, we stand ready to, to look at exploring an application or system that could do those reservations. But that's what we wanted to update with, update you all on today. If you have questions about where we're going, if, if, if the regulations that we want to, in a sense, delegate to C dot, if you have any questions about that, please ask those as well. Thank you.
Okay, council, any questions? Would you like to address the city attorney at this time? We have Councilman Gilbert, please.
You say that you're looking at other districts that this can fit into, correct? So if any councilperson does not want this in their district in certain areas, they say one way or the other, correct? And if a person is in that area that we say we could not be in the area, it will be enforced by our code people, correct?
Yeah, so that, that, I would look at it like this, yes, if there's, like, the short-term vacation one, right? So if there's no area in which they could operate, and it doesn't meet these other standards like a community-wide fair, some other community-based event that the code currently allows, then yes, we, they, that's something that I think C dot would take consideration and not, not create that zone.
You good, Councilman? Okay, Councilwoman Bird?
Follow up on what my colleague said, we don't enforce it now. How are we going to enforce it?
Well, I, pardon, at, at least from my office, I don't know if I've had any comments or concerns about.
We've had complaints turned in for up and down Brainerd Road, that's not a zone. We've had complaints of people doing those sorts of things on the weekends where there's nobody around to enforce. And so what, what makes this different?
Well, one, one thing I will say is that we're adding a penalty clause to the actual ordinance, so that's clear. Right now, it doesn't, doesn't provide that. So it's clear to anyone that gets the, gets a permit. If one does operate in violation, I think, like we do now, contact 311 or, or stop C P D or, anything from you guys. I think that's, I think that's essentially what we want them to do. If there are complaints, please let us know, I don't, I'm not aware of those food trucks that are not.
So the only enforcement arm that would be available on the weekends is the police?
Yes.
All right, and so you're saying that if some, if this were to go in place and there was an area in our district, anybody that's operating outside a designated area is out, is operating outside the law? Yes?
Yes.
All right, and so the response would have to come from the police, correct?
I'm not aware of L D O being on-call, but I would, is that, I would assume that's the case, yes.
So L D O, we, we pass ordinances, but we lack the power to enforce them or the person power to enforce them. Are we going to do something about that?
Well, Councilwoman, that's a good question. What we can do is, I can come back and talk with the C dot team. And if there's a, whether it's a number or some other complaint, whether it's email or something, we can think through that. That's a great question on the enforcement side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey Wade, I know we, we keep saying food trucks. Does this basically cover everything? Food, I C's, I mean, the, the snow cone trucks, beer trucks? Because I'm.
I think, give me one second here, I'll confirm this, want to look at the definition. I don't think it confirms the, the beer trucks, there's not, in fact, with food trucks, it excludes alcoholic beverages.
Okay, so it does, does exclude those specifically. I figured there was probably something in place, providing we're able to move forward.
Except in District Three, I think they can have beer trucks there.
That, that's fine. I, I'd, I'd seen some applications ready to go in District One, actually, and I just wanted to see how we can make that happen. What, what do you think a timeline, realistic timeline would be? I know you've got complete regulations, communication plan, and.
For the ordinance, and, and again, going back to that whole theme of simplicity, the ordinance itself is not, there haven't been a lot of changes. So you're talking maybe two weeks before that's ready to go. In fact, we can send a draft around that, that out pretty quickly. The regulations, I think, we're pretty close to getting those done. I'd say within the next thirty days, even. We've given ourselves a little buffer here for sixty, but I think probably thirty days is, is a good timeframe.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Attorney, I think you mentioned copying or duplicating what other cities have done with this, with this food truck ordinance. Is, is there any data in those other cities? I, I think really, for me, the crux of the matter becomes the food trucks competing against our brick-and-mortar restaurants. And I think that's what we, you know, we, we sort of want to do no harm to, to those industries as well. Is there any data backing up or showing that it's had no effect on the brick-and-mortar stores? Obviously, a lot of investment has gone into downtown restaurants, buildings and things of this nature. I, I wouldn't want us to start seeing the, the exodus of those brick-and-mortar restaurants because we've somehow unleashed these food trucks.
I think that's a great question, Councilman. And in fact, I, I would say, looking at Jim, that that's one of the things they considered when they originally adopted this, this ordinance back in 2013. We've heard actually mixed things. One is that, for instance, as I know there's a, a unit that's downtown where people like the fact, restaurant owners like the fact that that person's out front. But I think that's one of the things that the regulations will take into consideration exactly where those, those food trucks could be placed. And I think that would probably, you know, take into consideration some, some comments and concerns from those stakeholders in the community. You guys want to chime in on that at all?
One of the things we've written into our draft regulations is a, is a requirement to get some sort of blessing from the neighboring folks either.
I can't hear you.
I said, one of the things that we've drafted into the regulations is to, one, have, consider spacing to nearby restaurants, but also get some sort of approval either through a sanctioned organization that represents the area or, or some sort of petition approval of neighboring property owners. So I think that would cover us. There are certain cases where currently there are food truck vendors that are operating next to restaurants and they, and they like, they like the compatibility. Certainly, there are cases where that wouldn't happen, so we just want to make sure everybody's comfortable.
So explain that to me, I'm not, I guess I don't understand why a brick-and-mortar store would want a food truck sitting out front.
Well, I don't know that I'm the person to answer that, but the, the food truck, I mean, the, the food, the food oasis concept where you, you know, you have a bunch of locations for different types of food can sometimes elevate the whole area.
Okay.
That's, I think, the, the concept.
Well, I, I mean, I understand that, that many times a food truck can be sort of a test run to a brick-and-mortar store many times. And, and I certainly want to help develop that, but at the same time, I want to be sensitive to, you know, to these restaurants that are in a fixed brick-and-mortar location and paying rent many times, property tax, those things.
Well, I think that's a great thing, and again, that's a good comment. I think that's the great thing about the regulations that we're, we're looking at, right? That we're going to take into consideration those things, that it's going to be a vetting process before a zone is actually created. Including, including what Mr. Bailey just mentioned, which is talking with some of the restaurant owners there.
So back to my original question, is there some data available in these cities that we've looked at?
We can, we can try to bring back some data for you before the ordinance is put on.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Ledford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only comment is, Wade, will you make sure we get a red line copy when the ordinance is?
Absolutely.
Set forward to us, that would help us tremendously. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Gilbert?
I just got a question, Paul, for Wade. I know that we've been increasing the food truck, if we pass this. I know currently, health department have a very, very difficult time to regulate current places for its restaurant. We have so many restaurants in Chattanooga, it's very difficult, they don't have that many inspectors to inspect. So how would this affect them? Have we talked to them saying, how would this affect you for its inspection?
I'm not certain about, have we talked to the, to the health department? Yeah.
I've spoken with Low Wilkins about this. He, he knows the existing food trucks that are already here. He's already inspected them. He's inspected them for special events and so forth. So I don't think it's adding too much to their capacity to do this. And I think that hopefully this, you know, initiates that capacity and we see more food trucks. And then, you know, it might become an issue, but I don't think that, according to Low, they don't have really any issues with the mobile units. Usually, they show up at events typically, like a Chattanooga Market where they're all there, and they inspect them all at once. Because they used to do that at Nightfall as well.
So from our, from our perspective, I mean, that's our expectation for them to have that done. And so that, that's not necessarily our capacity, but if they haven't done that, then they, they're not getting a permit.
So you're saying that the current Health Department, we inspect the restaurants, that expects these trucks too, have no problem for additional trucks to be on the street? That what you're saying?
I, I mean, we didn't specifically ask, I didn't ask Low Wilkins from the Health Department if he had an issue with regulating the ones that were there, that are currently here, and if he would, you know, foresee an issue with having more food trucks. I mean, my, my thinking would be that they would adjust as needed.
And for us, the question that you asked is that, did he recognize that this is not just a one-time we inspect and they find versus they have to do it every year or twice a year sometimes to inspect? Does he?
Yes, he, he does. And I'll tell you, for all of the multi-day events, like a Riverbend or Chattanooga Market or Nightfall, they inspect those trucks on a regular basis for those events anyway. And when a new truck comes in, of course, they also have to get inspected right away.
I understand that that's a one-time deal situation. I'm talking about contemporarization every day, every Friday of the week, Saturday, whether it may be, contemporarization. That what you're speaking of is a special event. Yes, you can check them all at one time, no problem. Or you got trucks throughout the city, that you got additional trucks. That's something totally different. So I want to make sure that they know this is not just a festival. This is something that they can be doing in different areas seven days a week.
Right. My thinking, they would treat it just like they do a restaurant, if they're going to be serving on a regular basis, just like a, a brick-and-mortar restaurant does. They would inspect them on that same schedule that they do the brick-and-mortar restaurants.
If you're going to ask that question, right now, I spoke to them several times, they said they better can cover what they're already covering. So that's why I'm asking that question.
Right.
Thank you, Councilman. I have a question, City Attorney. Okay, what, what is the next step in this process so we can get some timelines to know just where we're going with this?
Very good. That's a great question, Mr. Chair. So what we want to do next is to send out a red line version for the council to review. We would then hope that you all are ready to put it on the agenda to move forward for adoption. Again, the, what is contemplated now is a 60-day effective period, or 60 days before it becomes effective. And we will, in that time, complete the regulations as well as applications for it. Certainly, once those are done, if you want to see a copy of those, we'll be happy to share those as well. But we would hope that in the next two weeks, we can get this on the agenda or so. If that's the pleasure of the council.
Okay. Councilwoman Burge.
So let me make sure I have this, this right. The first step is to establish zones.
The first step is to adopt the ordinance. And then, in the interim, you will, we have the regulations created. As part of that, you will have zones created.
Okay, so this, I guess my real question is, this isn't for individual trucks to say, hey, I want to do this. There has to be a zone established first.
Yes.
It's, it's by zone?
Well, it's by zone unless, again, there are also, we, we didn't remove the private property. You can still do this on private property, right? So that, what we did here is really expand it to allow it on city streets. But if you're going to do it on city streets, you have to do it by zone.
Okay, so a lot of them occur on private property? And it's up to the property owner to complain or?
That's right, and they have to authorize them to be on that property.
All right, so a lot of them are on, on, on parking lots of private property on the weekend. This doesn't pertain to that at all?
We're not, we're not changing that. We're just, we're simply, we're, we're making a couple of tweaks to those things, but for the most part, we're just expanding it to get to, to other zones on city streets.
So if, if there is one, you know, and so I want people to really understand that. If, if there is one on somebody's parking lot, there's no assurance or imprimatur by the city that it's been health inspected or meets any cer, any criteria?
No, they, they, I'm sorry, they still have to, to get a permit, you still have to comply with these regulations, right? And that's, that's the same thing that's in the current code.
So if I'm in Eastgate's parking lot?
Yeah.
I should have a permit, a business permit?
Should have a business, I think a business license.
From the city?
From the city, as well as something, a, a permit from the treasurer's office. And that's, again, you're authorized to do that by that property owner. Now, again, there are other events.
Whoa, 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 you're authorized to do it. You said two things. And, and so that's what I'm, I'm trying to answer questions from constituents. So I, I have a food truck and I'm on Eastgate's parking lot. It's assumed that I have a business license from the city. It's assumed that I'm health inspected. The only thing is not assumed is that I have permission from the property owner to be there.
It's assumed as written currently. It's assumed that you have the, you have the, the property owner has authorized you to be there.
Okay, what about, I'm talking about the city's liability. So, so I'm there with or without the property owner's permission, but this truck has a license from the city and is health inspected? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
You good? Councilman Gilbert.
What about state routes, like Brainerd Road, 58, Bonnie Oaks, other areas? Did y'all look at that, to that for them selling a food truck, you know, in those areas?
You know, I don't know if we mentioned state routes. I think we mentioned specifically city streets at this time, and so that might be a little bit of, we may have to look at that a little more. But right now, I think the, the items or the areas we can control for certainty are the ones we focus on.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any more comment?
No, I just want to, again, thank members of the team that worked on this, I'm the audience and Jim, and, and again, a couple of students from UTC as well, as again, Jonathan and CDOT for doing a great amount of work in our department at CPD. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, if you will go to Resolutions, 7A, please.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with the Charles H. Coolidge Medal of Honor Heritage Center Incorporated in substantially the form attached for a term of one year at the rate of $1 per year, with the option to renew for one additional year for approximately 600 square feet of a building at 1170 South Watkins Street, a portion of tax map number 156CC012 for the storage display cases obtained from the Chattanooga History Center.
Any questions? Okay, if you would read the resolution below it, 7A.
A resolution authorizing the administrator for the Department of Economic and Community Development to apply for and if awarded, accept the 10-Minute Walk Planning Grant and technologic, techno, I'm sorry, Technical Assistance Application in collaboration with the Trust for Public Land in the amount of $40,000.
Any questions? Okay, if there are no further questions, we are adjourned until 6 o'clock. Oh, wait me. Oh, got you. Man, I thought I got, I'm sorry, y'all. I thought I hit y'all off the hook today. Well, we do, we really flipped around today.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Can I get approval of the minutes, please? Thank you very much. Looking down at ordinances for final reading, I'm not going to have the, Madam Clerk read these. These are on final reading for tonight, so I would like to go ahead. John, I'm going to go ahead and go through the schedule and then we'll do FTC at the end, if that's okay?
Sure.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading, if you would, 6A.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to rezone property located at 713 Hamilton Avenue, more particularly described herein from ERM 3, Urban Edge Residential Multi-Unit, 3-stories maximum height, to ECX 3, Urban Edge Commercial, Mixed Use, 3-stores maximum height.
Again, we already presented this in committee a couple of weeks ago. This was deferred, so at request of Councilman Mitchell, I believe, so I have nothing, no information to add.
Very good. I'm seeing no light, so I would like to just make a note that we'll make sure that Chairman Mitchell has a chance to review this case. Item B, please.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance so as to rezone property located at 1700 Dodds Avenue, more particularly described herein from R2 Residential Zone to UGC Urban General Commercial Zone, subject to certain conditions.
Looking for Councilwoman Coonrod, no presence. Okay. And I am seeing no lights. John, you want to go ahead?
Okay, so again, no additional information for this. This was presented at your committee meeting several weeks ago. It was deferred, I believe, for a couple of weeks so that the applicant and Councilwoman Coonrod could get together, I think, to go over the proposal, so I have no additional information to present on that.
Very good, thank you. And I'm seeing no light, so let's move on to item C.
An ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code, Part 2, Chapter 38, zoning ordinance, Article 16, Downtown Chattanooga Form-Based Code, relative to recommended improvements based on a one-year renewal, a review.
All right. The moment we've all been waiting for.
All right. Well, I'm, just a few brief opening remarks. I'm going to turn it over to Karen Hunt and Emily Dixon, who will really do most of the presentation. But before I do that, I want to acknowledge some folks that are in the room. First, our Form-Based Code Committee, highly-paid Form-Based Code Committee, who spend many hours, and of course, I say that tongue-in-cheek, working, when we do have appeals or, or variance requests, they review those and we're really thankful for their service. John Strausberger, who's the chair, sitting to his left is Hadi Hefferling. And also have Jason Havron in the back, who serve on the Form-Based Code Committee and really are our trusted board that really reviews those tough cases when there's a need for a, something beyond the code allows for. They're the ones that deliberate and make those decisions on those. So appreciate y'all's service on the board.
Thank you.
As you know, this is a one-year review. It's a little more than a year. Of course, it's been about a year and a half. But I think, I think the fact that there hasn't been a lot of, I mean, we're going to talk, there are some things we need to improve, obviously, but I think the fact that it's gone so well, and you'll hear Karen say there's been very few variances out of the total building permit request, shows how well the code is working. And I want to give kudos to the next key element of the success, and that's the staff. The Land Development Office headed by Dallas Rucker and Charles Young, who's a big part of this team, and Emily Dixon is the frontline. She's right here, Emily Goodstand. She came on board about, she's been about a year now, almost?
Yeah.
Almost a year. She's the, she's really the frontline that works with this, with the clients that come through seeking to do a project, and she's been a great resource to the city in helping administer this code. So as you know, we're going to have, just again, a timeline, we're going to give you this briefing tonight. There's going to be a public hearing next week. There are about 36 changes. I know it sounds like a lot, but actually, if you think about it, and if you've been working this new code for about a year, you're going to have some tweaks and changes. Most of those changes are what I'll call housekeeping clarifications. Six of them, I would say, are some, what I call your hot topic changes. And Karen's going to give you an overview of what those hot topics are. So six out of the 36, I would say, are definitely going to need some further public discussion. That's why we're here, and you're here as a council, to, to hear the different perspectives on some of those changes. So Karen's going to give you an overview of that. So again, instead of going through every 36, I don't think you would make it through all 36. We thought it'd be more helpful for you to hear about those six hot topics that you'll be getting calls about. So I'm going to turn it over now to Karen, who's going to kick it off from here.
Hello, Ms. Hunt. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
We're very excited.
Good. The reading of the code is John's. Okay. Make sure I'm working here. I'm not doing something right. Is there an orange button? Ah, that helps. Thank you. Okay. As John said, we've, we've passed the one-year mark, and one of the requirements when this code was adopted back in 2016 was that the staff would conduct a, a survey of both the applicants who submitted projects in the Form-Based Code area as well as the, the affected neighborhood associations. So we have done that, and I'll tell you a little bit about that. And we've looked at a lot of the, the cases, so we're here tonight to propose some potential changes to you. I thought it might be helpful, before we dive into that, just to remind ourselves of why we thought a Form-Based Code was going to be a good idea for the downtown. First of all, we really didn't have any good zones that worked well in an urban area. So this is an urban code intended for an urban area to promote mixed-use buildings, multi-story buildings, a walkable downtown. We also, one of the, one of the goals of this is to have a high-quality public realm, our streets and sidewalks, to make them safe and friendly and animated. We also want to support densities or have densities that can support transit in the downtown area. Another goal is to have high-quality innovative landscape design, not just because the landscaping is beautiful, which it is, but also help with stormwater management, reducing the heat buildup in the downtown, just providing some shade, filtering air pollutants, those sort of things. We also want to encourage a diversity of housing options, so people with different preferences will have a, a place to live in the downtown. And another final goal I'll mention is to have predictable results. That's one of the things we heard, both from the development community and from the, the residents in the neighborhoods in the downtown, was that they wanted the process to be more predictable. So as John mentioned, we only have a few. There are, we've had a lot of building permits in the Form-Based Code in downtown area in the, the last year. The, the Land Development Office took a look at all those, crunched some numbers on that. Only 38 of them had to go before the Form-Based Code Committee for a variance or a modification, as we call it in the Form-Based Code. So that's only 2%. So we thought that was pretty good. Of those 38, nine of them dealt only with signs. So we've had a, a number of, of sign variances come forward. So how did we get to these proposed amendments? We went through a pretty lengthy process. First of all, the, the staff reviewed all of the cases that came through for permits. We had a lot of meetings and talked about issues that were coming up repeatedly. We analyzed, and when I say we, I mean both the, the planning staff and the Land Development Office. CDOT was involved in a lot of those as well. We took a look at all of the cases that went before the Form-Based Code Committee to see if there were any repeating patterns there. We then, as I mentioned before, sent a survey to all, to the applicants as well as to the impacted neighborhood associations. We actually had some stakeholder meetings with those same two groups in October. The Land Development Office reviewed this with the Form-Based Code Committee, got their input. All of the proposed amendments are now posted online. The Planning Commission reviewed it for the first time in December and then took action in February, and we've posted their proposed version online as well. And, and throughout that process, we've been sending email updates out to people. We have a list of about 600 people that signed up to be informed, and we've been doing that regularly. Okay, so let's jump into the amendments. I know most of you, if not all, have seen this table before, but just in case you've forgotten to remind you, as John said, it's divided into two groups. The first half are what we would call just minor housekeeping items. The second half are the more substantial changes. So as you look at this, the far-left corner, left... So as you look at this, the far-left corner, left corner, excuse me, left column, has item numbers, so if you have a question about any of these and you're looking at that sheet, you can refer to that. It also gives you the page number in the code, the section number. There's a column that just kind of describes in general terms what the issue is, why this is needed. And then this column gives you the exact wording of what is being proposed. And then the far-right column shows you what the original text was, so you can compare the two without having to flip back and forth between this list and the code itself. Okay, so these are, this is a topical list of all of the proposed amendments. Again, you see the more minor housekeeping issues that just require some clarification or cross-references on the left, the more substantial changes are on the right. The substantial changes really involve either we're proposing to change something to a standard, or we're proposing a change in a process. And I'm not going to go through all of those in detail. If you have questions about a specific one, I can certainly address them. As John said, though, what we would like to do is touch on the six items that you see in red, because those are the only items, those six are the only ones that we received public comments about, and they're the only six where the Planning Commission version and the staff version differ a little bit. Let me pause there, though, and make sure, are there any of the others that the council has any questions on?
Councilwoman Henderson, please.
Karen, item 13, under short-term vacation rentals.
Yes.
Why are we changing it to L and not to P?
That change was recommended, again, we consider it a minor change. We already were allowing short-term vacation rentals in the code, and then the council passed a new resolution, excuse me, new ordinance, I guess, last year that allowed short-term vacation rentals in other parts of the city. And all we did was, we went back into the Form-Based Code and just tweaked that language so it matches the short-term vacation rental ordinance exactly. There were just a couple minor differences, I think, in the wording.
But under your, well... Under the allowable uses table.
Mm-hmm.
You're changing the designation of something from S-Z to L.
Okay, let me look that up.
Which L is limited.
Oh, go ahead, John.
I think referring to there's, because there's Chapter 10, where this is actually resides, governs that. So all we're saying is you just can't, it's not permitted by right, because Chapter 10, where we created that whole special section on short-term vacation rentals, is actually what governs what you can and can't do and how you register. So all we're saying is you need to go, it's governed by that part of the city code. That's why you see the L there. So anytime there's something that's just not by right, but there's some caveats to it, is an L. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
The point, the point-
It is permitted in that area, though.
Uh-
I'm not going to, I mean, I just want to make sure that-
As long as it meets Chapter 10, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't quite hear or understand your questions. Any others? Okay. Zoom along with the rest of these. I'll take you through each of these in a little more detail. And basically, I'm going to cover four things, what the, for each one, what the current, what the code currently allows, what the staff is recommending, then what the Planning Commission is recommending, and then on a couple of them, I have a little additional information just to kind of help with understanding what the issue is. And I won't take these exactly in order, because a couple of them are related, so we group them together, but I will cover these six items. So the first one, everyone's favorite topic, parking in the downtown. Currently, the Form-Based Code has parking minimums. So we do have minimum requirements for parking, we know we have to have adequate parking in the downtown, but we have learned that you have to be a little more creative about providing parking in the downtown. You just don't have as much room as you do in the suburbs. For instance, the Form-Based Code allows some discounts for shared parking in the downtown, something that we encourage. However, the staff is starting to see cases where applicants are providing a lot more parking than is required by the code, like two and a half times more than what is required. And that is not shared parking, it's not public parking, it's just for that individual business. So one proposal that the staff is making here is that we maintain the parking minimums, first of all, that does not change, but that for new parking lots, we add a maximum or a cap that says you cannot have more than 20% over what is required. After hearing some feedback from some of the stakeholders about this proposal, we added a caveat to that to say that that maximum would not apply to shared parking, or to structured parking, or to public parking. The Planning Commission had a different take on this, the Planning Commission recommended that we not add parking maximums to this. Their reasoning was, first of all, that the cost of building parking is very expensive, and that in and of itself would probably discourage over-parking. They also felt that the market just was not going to build additional parking unless the applicant felt they really needed it to finance their project. Also, they felt, you know, they said parking was a major point of debate when we were working on the Form-Based Code, and let's not just dredge this up again. As you know, it is always a hot topic of debate, so we want to spend, I want to spend, if that's okay, just a couple minutes reviewing some information we've pulled up. First of all, if you go back to the goals of the Form-Based Code, again, we're trying to animate our streets. One thing that makes that very difficult is when you have long expanses of parking lots along the street. We don't really want our streets to be dominated by surface parking lots, we want to have more lively shops and stores and things for people to frequent in the downtown, businesses. Also, looking at what happens when you start to increase parking requirements. Currently, in the suburbs, we typically require four spaces for every 1,000 square feet of a business. And you can see on the top right, that's what that looks like, with the blue being a three-story building and the reddish-brown color being the amount of space a surface parking lot would take up at that standard. What we have in the downtown area in the Form-Based Code for commercial businesses is instead of one space for every 1,000 square feet, which shrinks down the surface parking area a little bit. Of course, it still takes up quite a bit of land, I mean, cars are just big. I wanted to give you, show you a couple of examples of some of the businesses that have applied and have proposed to provide a lot more parking than is required. This one is on Rossville Avenue. This applicant purchased an existing building, renovated it for some offices. They had a very large site, and so they wanted to basically use the entire site for parking. The code only required them to have 30 spaces, but they were going to provide 75, which was two and a half times what was required. Again, it wasn't going to be shared parking, it was just for their business. Just another example, this is the Moxie Hotel that's currently under construction on King Street. The code only requires 58 spaces, they're providing 125, so again, over two times what's being required. Another one, a new hotel that's proposed on Carter Street. I'm sorry, I neglected to put the numbers in here, but you can see the parking is, ends up being bigger than the building itself. And just to maybe go into a little more detail about why we're saying that over-parking could be a bad thing, because you're probably, I'm getting looks like, okay, Karen, you're crazy, what is wrong with having more parking in the downtown? In an urban area, it's different than out in the suburbs, again, you just have more room. Your lots are a lot smaller in the downtown. Buildings are closer together, so hopefully, people can walk to them, you have, you know, mixed uses in the downtown. We also have a lot of other options for getting around the downtown. You have a lot of public parking garages, we have transit, including a free shuttle. You have parking spaces on the street, you have sidewalks on all the streets. So, again, we're trying to encourage transit use and walking and try and minimize the amount of surface parking lot throughout the downtown. Another thing I want to point out is that this is not anything new for Chattanooga. We currently have parking maximums in the zoning ordinance. In fact, every zone in the zoning ordinance has a 50% maximum right now. In the Urban General Commercial Zone, the UGC Zone, we shrunk that down to a 20% maximum, which is the same that we're proposing for the Form-Based Code. So we already have 50% maximum throughout the downtown. What we're proposing to do is make it a little bit tighter for the urban area, like we're doing in the Urban General Commercial Zone. I also, last year, when we were, right before we adopted the code, I met with representatives from Carter and Republic Parking and asked them to show us all of their parking facilities in the downtown, the ones that they manage, and tell us how many spaces they had and how well they were being used. So on this map, you see, it's a little hard to see the colors, but the little red dots are all of the Carter and Republic facilities. Now, we're not looking at all the parking in the downtown, just their facilities. And of those, we divided it up into districts. On the North Shore, they said on a typical average day, they have 372 spaces available. In the Riverfront, on the South Side, it was 284. In the core of the downtown, kind of 4th Street to 12th, I guess, 1,746. Now, that you think, wow, that's a huge number, but again, we've got a lot of multi-story parking garages in that area. In the South Side, 442 spaces. So again, these are just Carter and Republic lots and garages with that many spaces available, not to mention all of the other private spaces that might be available on a given day.
Karen, can I stop you real quick?
Yes, sir.
I do have a light, if I could, Vice Chairman Smith, please. Are you sure? Okay, thank you.
Keep in mind, of course, you know, all of those spaces are not right at the front door of the business you want to go to. In a downtown, you're going to have to walk a few blocks, obviously. River City Company, as I'm sure you know, also conducted a study and looked at downtown parking. Basically, I won't go into any detail of that, other than to say the study revealed that while there are a couple areas, namely around the University and Erlanger, that are about to reach their maximum capacity, that overall, the downtown area-wide does not have a parking shortage. That we have enough parking, basically, the problem is the way it's managed, that a lot of the parking is private parking, and so it's not available to the public. And so that was their basic recommendation, is that we need to look at how that parking is managed and try to make more of the private spaces available to the public and use that real estate, that resource that we have, more efficiently in the future. Also, just real quickly, we looked at a number of other cities. We are by no means not the only ones that are looking at parking maximums. This gives you just a list, not an exhaustive survey, but a few places that we looked at that have the same thing. So again, quickly on that, currently, we have some minimums with some discounts allowed. Staff is recommending a 20% maximum, but then exempting shared parking or public parking from that. Planning Commission said, we don't think we should have any parking maximums at all. Okay, would you like me to keep moving on or stop for a minute on that one?
Yeah, I think I see the light now, so Vice Chairman Smith, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be one of those giving you a crazy look.
That's okay.
The number-one complaint we have about downtown is no parking. And although I understand the recommendations from that last study and how we can better utilize parking, we certainly can't force private property owners to open up their parking. So there's a lot of coordination and working to be done. On top of that, I understand that there may not be a significant lack of parking if you're willing to walk a few blocks, but some of the people that I'm talking to are also seniors. There are also people who would like to visit on rainy days and don't feel like walking two, three, four blocks or more. There are restaurants, many of them, that have closed down in a one-block stretch of Market Street due to no parking, they can't get enough business. So I'm really having a hard time with the thought of forcing less parking, just for that one reason. On top of that, then I, then I have to consider, well, if you're only allowed to do 20%, what do they have to do with the rest of their land? They're not going to build a building on it necessarily, they may not want to build, they may not have the funds to build a building, they've got all this open land, but we're going to tell them they can't use it for parking even though it might be perfectly suited to be used for parking. So, I mean, I understand the basis of Form-Based Code, but in the, in the context of parking, and then you also mentioned requirements. A parking requirement is totally different than a parking maximum. So, I mean, I really can't even relate the two. So if, if somebody wants, owns a piece of property and they build a building and they want to have parking, I'm, I guess I'm with Planning Commission, I'm struggling to see where we have the right to tell them that they can't have that additional parking to make it easier on their, on their employees, on their customers, whoever may be coming to see them. So, I mean, I wanted to finish, in case there was something that might change my mind here, but I'll have to significantly disagree that the downtown has plenty of parking on any given day when it literally is the number-one complaint we have about downtown, other than panhandling, and that we're seeing businesses go out of business over and over and over, multiple businesses in, in just a small area of downtown. So, I, I, I'm failing to see where that even makes any sense whatsoever.
I think, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there. Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and we've heard the same comments from, from people. Again, we're not, we don't want to cut back on the, we don't want to put an absolute, you can only have this many spaces, there's already a minimum requirement, so this would just say you can't go more than 20% over that. I will say, I don't know how well it's enforced, but there is currently a maximum like that throughout the city. It's 50%, not 20%, so, but I certainly hear all your concerns.
So, yeah, I guess, okay, instead of just focusing on the maximum, focus on reducing that amount. What, what is, what is bringing you to the point that you feel like changing it from 50 to 20 is something that we need to do?
Again, I think it's based partly on what the Land Development Office is starting to see with people providing twice as much parking as required. I haven't gotten to this issue yet, but a related topic is that some of those same folks are coming in and asking for a variance from the landscaping standards around those parking lots. They're saying, well, okay, even though we're providing twice as much parking as you're requiring us to have, we want some relief from the landscape requirements, because we're going to lose a few parking spaces if we do that. So it is two different issues, but that is kind of a problem that we're starting to see, and we think that it's important to have that landscaping around those parking lots, at least, especially where it is visible from the public right-of-way.
I guess in the first part of that, LDO is seeing more spaces. So, the second part of that, if you don't want to give them a variance because they have more parking spaces than needed, then we don't give them a variance. I'm still not seeing where that can be handled in current, everyday business that we do as a city, either in variance or somebody wanting to put in additional parking.
And that is, I thought I heard John jumping up, that is, when, if I can jump ahead to the landscaping issue, in fact, that was the Planning Commission's recommendation to just let the Form-Based Code Committee handle that, as they do now.
Right. Okay, so I'm definitely agreeing with them, and just trying to understand why, why we would take a drastic step in the opposite direction.
I would just add another thought. Sometimes, I think the other, other aspect is to get folks thinking beyond just their immediate sight, but looking at, because if it's always the path of least resistance to max out my parking, then we don't use our garages as much. Yeah, so I think it's a balance. I think to, the, on the one issue, I think if you over-park, we've seen some streets, now, I hear what you're saying about some streets where some restaurants are struggling, but at the same time, those streets where you've got nothing but parking become, are not fun to walk along. So you, the animation of those streets becomes a problem in terms of getting activity and development when all you've got is surface parking on a block and another block. So I think what we were suggesting here is that, that's why we have the exception for shared parking and for parking garages. We know that there's a parking needs, but if you're just doing a private- We know that there's parking needs, but if you're just doing a private surface parking lot, having some kind of a cap, basically, at least gives you the option to explore other options. I would say also, you could still go to Form-Based Code Committee and ask for an exception to that, per the process. But we're just trying to get folks to consider other options in addition to surface parking as the least, you know, the easiest solution. When, because if everybody, think of it this way, if every building has its own parking, it's hard to get a urban walkable street. Right? I mean, because if you have, that's what differentiates a urban place from a suburban location, is actually, you've got parking clustered in locations, more, you have, using more of your parking garages, shared parking, that's how you get an urban walkable street.
Please. So are we going to be building a parking garage to add the additional parking that's needed downtown, John?
Well, yeah, good.
I do want to comment that if you haven't reviewed River City's parking study, which they're referencing, it is really helpful and enlightening, because as you're highlighting, Councilman, there are some neighborhoods that are more parking stressed than others, but there is not sort of a blanket need for large additional structures. So I would encourage kind of getting it out of the abstract. There may be locations where additional parking infrastructure is needed through government investment, but what the parking study found actually is that it's not sort of blanketly all of downtown. And Councilman Oglesby, I know you were involved in that, so you may be much more of an expert than me, but I wanted to chime in about the role of a city play.
Thank you, I was only referencing something that John said. So, again, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to, I understand maybe in the larger scheme, and maybe not in certain areas of downtown.
Sure.
And I get what you're saying about it not being a place, maybe a lot of people want to walk by empty lots, I get that. There are places with empty lots where businesses are still closing, so it's not necessarily, I'm not saying that that's the answer to it, but when, when that is what you hear so significantly, and if we had the population to supply some of those businesses with the clientele, to keep them in business without people driving in from the suburbs, like I do every day, and needing to be able to park somewhere, I could see that, but we obviously don't, or the businesses wouldn't be closing at the rate that they are, a lot of them. So, that's, I mean, I
I hear what you're saying.
I mean, my perspective is what I'm coming at, as well as my entire district is going to drive downtown. They are not going to bike, bus, or any other way to get downtown and enjoy what we have to offer. So, from the perspective of myself and my district, it's an issue to start talking about actually preventing additional parking.
Which is why I hate shared parking, that's why we add the exemption for shared parking or parking garages for that reason. Because you want to have, you don't want to limit from adding that supply for public parking purposes. I hear what you're saying.
All right.
Thank you.
Good, Council?
Nope.
Nope.
Karen, I'm glad we started with this, it sounds very familiar to a Planning Commission meeting, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Councilman Henderson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen, obviously, I understand if you're, you know, the reason we have zoning ordinances is because we want a place to look a particular way. So I get, I get the smaller parking lots to try to create an urban feel. At the same time, you know, I hear a lot, particularly from the North Shore, about not enough available parking. So I guess, my biggest question in determining whether I would want to put a cap on the maximum or not, is there any correlation, do we have any study that would correlate between a business providing an additional, much more parking than required, and the relief of available public parking? In other words, is there any, is there anything that suggests that if we allow these businesses to provide extra parking, does that somehow give us relief in our public parking places?
I think if, if those spaces, the businesses provided, were shared parking, then that would relieve a need to provide more public parking, if I'm understanding your question. I think the, again, the River City Company study, the study they commissioned, said that that's a big part of the issue that they found downtown, is that we have a lot of parking spaces, but the vast majority of those spaces are privately held and available only for those people. And what we need to do is to share what we already have in place.
Okay, so if we allowed the shared parking, when we say shared parking, it would be a combination of public and private.
True.
I mean, and the example you gave of the real estate agent, or the real estate company, I think it's Keller Williams, isn't it?
Well, the one thing I want to add, it would be a combination of public and private, but it would still be monetized, it would still have a fee. So those business owners who want to lease out the remainder of their spaces could do so at a fee, and so it would still be revenue generating. So when we're asking people to make their parking facilities available to the public, we're not asking them to make them free, and we're not mandating how they do it, or the rates they charge, or some of those things. So, just wanted to add that in.
Okay. So if it was shared parking, it would give some relief to available public parking?
True.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Good? All right. Seeing no more lights, I wanted to just add real quick, Karen, in the maximum, if there's a cap, does that not, in planning for future growth of a business, does that not kind of curtail that growth plan, if there's one in place? For a particular business, or?
If, say if a business grew, enlarged, and wanted more parking, then they could always add that at that point, because the parking requirement is based on the square footage.
But they would have to build that at a later time versus during the construction process in the beginning.
Right, right.
And that, that's a separate, whole separate tab, if you will.
True.
Okay. Just so I just thought for a consideration there. Seeing no more lights, I'm, please continue.
Okay. Okay, related issue, landscaping around parking lots. I mentioned earlier that some of the, you know, places were providing a lot of parking, and that some of them were then going to the Form-Based Code Committee, asking for relief from the landscaping requirements, because they were afraid they were going to lose a few parking spaces. So again, if, I'm going to skip through some of these slides, you've seen some of these, they're basically repeat. Same one here, on Rossville Avenue, I'll use the same example. The code would have required them to put landscaping around the perimeter here, and then a number of trees within the center, and basically, they were asking for some of that to go away. And I think they were only losing a few parking spaces for that. Excuse me, I didn't mean to skip ahead. So for that reason, sorry, I lost my place here. The staff, currently, we're required, again, the perimeter, parking, perimeter landscaping around the parking lot, and some interior islands. The staff is proposing to not allow any variances, to get rid of landscaping if you're already exceeding the parking requirement. Planning Commission said, they disagreed with us, said, no, we don't think we need to change it, you can already go before the Form-Based Code Committee and get a variance, let's just let them deal with that.
Right.
So those are the differences in that one.
I remember that conversation.
Okay, neighborhood meetings. I am, sorry, keeps going, going to turn this over to Emily for this one.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Ms. Dixon.
I'm Emily. So neighborhood meetings have always kind of been a hot topic with the form-based code. Right now, the standard is that if you're doing any type of project in the form-based code area, that is four thousand square feet of commercial space, or if you are doing residential five-plus units, you are required to have a neighborhood meeting. That also means that if you want to put a sign on a four thousand square foot commercial space right now, or larger, you are required to have a neighborhood meeting. You know, some of those smaller things are having to go before the neighborhood. The staff's recommendation is to limit neighborhood meetings to Form-Based Code Committee cases only. So that would be, if somebody is deviating from the code, if they're not following the code to a T, then they would have to have a neighborhood meeting. But if they are meeting the requirements that are set forth by the code, and not deviating at all, then they would not be required to have that neighborhood meeting. Planning Commission's recommendation for that is to eliminate the neighborhood meetings completely. Their reasoning was that the Form-Based Code Committee itself is a public hearing, and that because proper notice is given, which that includes, you know, letters to residents within three hundred feet of the project, being posted, you know, online, which we do fifteen days prior to the meeting, and then, you know, also just having the newspaper ad go out and things like that was enough notice to the neighborhood. The reason also that, you know, staff had recommended to eliminate some of the requirement for the meeting is because of managing expectations for the neighborhoods. I've been to multiple neighborhood meetings, different ones around the city, at some of them, they've been, you know, presenting form-based code cases, and I will say, from seeing that, from feedback I've gotten from residents and from developers, there's kind of a disconnect right now, as far as the expectation. A lot of the time, when, you know, neighborhoods show up to hear about a project, they're thinking that they're going to get there, and they're going to get to specify what color brick, or what size of windows, or things like that. And sometimes for these variance cases, like I had one sign, for example, the business has been, you know, working and, you know, functioning for over a year, and they're just going to present their sign, and the neighborhood's asking, where are the people going to park? And they go, we've been in business a year. You know, why, why are we, why are you wanting to talk about parking at this point? So, it's, in some cases, I think it has caused a little bit of a problem with the neighborhoods having that greater expectation of, we're getting to know about every single element of the project, when really, the intent of the meeting is, you know, something entirely different, or much smaller than the entirety of the project. So, do you guys have any questions?
Yes, actually, I have two lights on, so if you're ready, Councilman Henderson.
So, of all the changes that y'all are recommending, this one has really drawn the most amount of interest, I think, from
I'm sure.
the people that I'm hearing from. And the Neighborhood Association that I'm associated with
Mm-hmm.
in the form-based code, strongly objects to taking the neighborhood meeting requirement out.
Completely.
Yes, completely.
Yes.
In fact, and I noticed, you're on twenty-eight, and twenty-seven also covers neighborhood meetings before a developer goes to get his permit
Mm-hmm.
or her permit.
Yes.
It's also taken that out. I do have a, is Ms. Williams still sitting over there? I've got a question for her, because in the comments, it says, the contact information for the Neighborhood Association is not being updated regularly, and applicants have not always been able to reach officers to schedule a meeting. It was my understanding that we've gotten better at requiring that a Neighborhood Association update their information every year.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We ask that the Neighborhood Associations update their information in January, or at any time that they have a change in their officers, or change of email addresses, or change of phone numbers. And then what we do in January is, we go through those, we generally have an intern that goes through them to see if they're updated. And a good way to get people to update it is zoning, because people tend to want to be contacted in cases of zoning, when zoning items come up, but we, yeah, we, a lot of departments in the city use that database to update folks.
So it is, your understanding that that information is being updated?
Correct. If a Neighborhood Association has a change of officers, email address, phone number, they are asked to contact us, because we really wouldn't know. We have a hundred, over a hundred and twenty registered associations.
Thank you.
Good, Council?
No, not yet. Well, I'm
You want to roll?
Well, maybe, I hope. So, is our attorney back here? So, I guess, no, there's not. I mean, I would really like for this council to, to consider this one, to leave in it, well, twenty-seven and twenty-eight the way that it is, because of neighborhood, Neighborhood Associations wanting to be involved. And I think we all want participation from our neighborhoods. To exclude them, I think sends the wrong message. My question would be, out of all of the changes that are being proposed, how do we get something in a form that is presented at one time, or are we going to take it individually? What, how do you see that happening, so that we can address the ones that we'd like to take out, go on with the ones that are good, or that we're good with?
I think we can do it, like, we've had that happen with some other ordinances, you could certainly have a list of items that you want to make amendments to, by a particular section, and move to amend those sections with your recommended changes. And that would be a part of your motion to amend.
Okay.
So
Since, let me ask you another question, since this is not technically on the agenda, could any council person propose a list of items, and it become a separate proposal ordinance?
I think these are coming from, recommended from the Planning Commission, is that right?
They're coming from, per what the form-based code says, it's supposed to be, you know, a list of things from LDO staff, and then be edited or added to by Planning Commission.
And some are actually staff version, and some are planning commission version.
I think that would be the pleasure, I mean, what we have done in alternate version, when it's been something that the council, I think, has made some recommendations, I think we've had a version that might be a council recommendation version. So, let me think about that. Do you know when this is proposed to be on the agenda?
Well, it's on the agenda for the twenty-seventh.
I think, and they may be moving it back a week, and that's why, by the way, we numbered them
That's right.
for that very reason. We numbered it so it's easy, if there are things, you know, like, things that are easy, you can move on, and then you can identify by number, if there's a particular item that you may have a different variation on. Again, if something's not taken on, or if there's not a change made, so let's say if this is eight, twenty-eight's causing you some concern, you just don't take action on item twenty-eight, so it stays as it is now. So you know what, so you don't need to, I think what I hear you saying, Councilman, correct me if I'm wrong, is you like it the way it is, you don't want to change it.
On number twenty-eight?
Yes.
And twenty-seven, that's correct.
So then you, correct me if I'm wrong, would be, then we don't take action on those, you would not take action on those items, so the ordinance stays as currently written. Does that make sense? No change means it stays the way it is.
And what I'm trying to figure out is, how do we change the ones that you are proposing that we're all good with? And not, are we going to have to take these one at a time? That's my question.
There's, there's two different ways you can do it. And like anything, you can take action on all the items, except for items, like, say, let's say hypothetically, you're good, which I know the downtown parking is going to get, is going to have more conversation, let's say if those are the two items that you had concern about, you didn't want to change, you could, you could take action item, you could act on everything else, excluding those two items. And essentially, that means, those are the, these, those two items aren't changed in the code, because each item references a change to the code. So failure, or lack of action on an item, means the code stays the way it is, on those particular topics.
John, let me
Is that helpful?
Let me jump in real quick. So the way this is presented, all the changes are presented in one, one, one agenda item, correct?
Yes.
So in order to strike an item, to remove it, we would have to go through and make an amendment to strike
That's correct.
that line item. That would be the cleanest way, I could think.
Yes.
If you did not want to take action on any particular item, is to go through and make an amendment to strike
Yes.
that item. Okay, great. And this is on the agenda for a public hearing next week, and I did plan to make a, an ask for moving this to April third, just FYI. Do you want to add anything else?
No, I, again, I just think, maybe I can circle back next week, we can come back with, whether it's a version that's sponsored by Councilman Henderson, or something to that effect, that addresses those changes, or we could try to capture a number of those comments and questions, concerns, next week during the public hearing.
During the Form-Based Code Committee, when I did present this to all of the members of the committee, this was one that they did feel very strongly about. They did not want to completely do away with the meeting. They did think that this was an integral part of the form-based code process, as far as including the neighborhoods. But they did agree that the need for, you know, some of the neighborhood meetings that were just for smaller projects, that were not deviating from the code, were probably not necessary. not necessary. Um, when I attended, um, several, we have five neighborhoods that are within the FBC boundary or could be affected by it. Um, I attended some of those meetings and did explain this to them. And the majority of those Neighborhood Associations said that, you know, "Yeah, we really don't wanna lose that piece where we get to hear about these bigger projects that do need major modifications, but for the smaller things like, you know, signs or like an interior build-out, they were not as concerned with those."
Right. Emily, I've got one more light. Councilman Oglesby, please.
Mimicking, um, Councilman Henderson's concern because of everything that has been changed, that's the one that's been the most disturbing. And to take that away from our constituents, and that's what we're about up here at this council. We hear that kind of stuff all the time. So, a lot of time, we don't have the options to choose what we hear and what we don't hear. But that was, that was the most disturbing piece of all. I couldn't support anything that takes away a neighborhood's ability to voice their concerns because ultimately you're gonna make the, the, the decision that's best for the project.
Certainly.
But at the same time, we need that option to hear the constituents' concerns because often the constituents can bring something very interesting to the conversation that may not have affected us. And I would hate to lose that ability for that to happen. So, I'm just really piggybacking on Councilman Henderson's thought and concerns.
Absolutely. And another, um, another educational piece that I have been doing with the Neighborhood Associations is to make them aware of how they can get additional information on projects that might not even require a neighborhood meeting right now. Um, and that is to make them aware of the process, um, to get logged on to Citizens Access Gateway, which in Citizens Access Gateway, you can go in there, you can type in an address right now and see any permits that are open for it. Um, you know, with that information, you can make an open records request and you can, if it's a big set of paper drawings, make an appointment to come into our office. Or, um, if they're digital, like most of the civil plans are, we can actually send them to you. And the turnaround on that is usually within a day or two. I know that because I do a lot of them myself. So, the turnaround on those is excellent, too. I'm really big on transparency and making sure that people know what's going on in their area, even if there isn't necessarily a Neighborhood Association meeting required even now.
Okay, thank you, Emily. I'm seeing no more lights on this particular item unless the council has something else they'd like to add. Seeing none, please proceed.
Thank you.
Okay, looking at the clock, I will try and move through these next couple pieces quickly. Um, item thirty-one, um, deals with perimeter parking lot landscaping. Parking lots landscaping and neighborhood meetings, seems like it's everything. Um, the current standard for this is that, um, you are required to put landscaping around the entire perimeter of a parking lot, so all sides of your parking lot. The staff came back and said, "Well, that's a little onerous because that means if your parking lot butts up to your building, you've even gotta put landscaping between the building and the parking lot." And we thought that was a little overkill. So, the staff is recommending to remove that part, that one side, if it's between the parking lot and the building. Um, Planning Commission came back and said, "Let's not require any landscaping around the perimeter of the lot unless it fronts a public street." That was the only place that they felt it was necessary. Um, just to illustrate that, here you have a parking lot with four sides, one against a building, one along the street, and two on, um, adjacent property lines. Um, where you see the red line, that's what the staff is proposing to eliminate. The Planning Commission is proposing to eliminate everything except what's just along the street frontage. They felt like that the street frontage was the most important part. We shouldn't be telling people, "You have to landscape around the, the back of, um, your property line." Again, to illustrate that graphically, what could happen is if you, you've got a couple empty lots here, if you had someone put a building here on, on this corner currently, if this back area was their parking, they would have to landscape on all three, well, currently they would have to do it on all four sides. Um, staff recommends you would only have to do it on these three sides. Planning Commission would only have them do it on the side on the street. The, the problem the staff saw with that was that then you've got this parking lot right next to, potentially next to, um, an adjacent home or, or some other maybe future homes or businesses and that those people might want some screening between themselves and the, the parking lot as well. Okay, ground floor elevations, this one should be quick. Um, currently, um, there is a maximum, minimum and maximum ground floor elevation for residential buildings. And that is primarily to ensure that, um, if you're, because buildings in the downtown tend to be built up close to the sidewalk, if you have a, a residence up close to the sidewalk, somebody's walking by, if, if your building is right down on grade, you can tend to see right into their windows. Um, and so it's kind of a standard urban design practice to raise it up a couple feet. Usually you'll see residential buildings raised a couple feet and that's oftentimes the reason. Um, currently, the recommend, or the standard is that you have to be up at least sixteen inches. Um, staff was not proposing any change to this code. This is one where Planning Commission, um, submitted a request to remove the minimum ground floor elevation of sixteen inches. Um, they felt that the code, or the building code already requires you to be up six inches. Um, they said it was causing some problems for them when, um, they're trying to build a handicap accessible unit and also if they were on a, a slope site, especially if it had a cross slope, that, that was causing some issues for them. So, their recommendation here is to move, to remove that sixteen-inch minimum.
Karen, I've got a question on that one.
Yes, sir.
Is it a hardship that's creating or is it just a financial extension to create, create the handicap accessible?
By having to raise it. Um, I'm sure part of it is financial. It, it may be too, um, that they might have to add some ramps in that, that maybe, um, or a bit of a hardship given the, the size of the lot. Um, I, I don't wanna speak for them, they didn't elaborate on that.
Okay. Um, I do have a light on for Vice Chairman Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Karen, just out of curiosity, I'm not familiar with the sixteen-inch minimum. What, what was the purpose of that? Do you know what it was originally?
Mm-hmm. A- again, it's really just to, to raise up a, a residence. For commercial buildings, this wouldn't apply, but for a residence, again, if I'm building a, a townhome and I'm right at grade, um, my windows are gonna be down low, so if you're walking by, you could potentially see right in the windows. By elevating it a foot and a half or so, it kinda raises that up so people can't see right in, in your windows. That's the basic reason.
I, I guess, I understood that to be a preference. It was just, I didn't realize that that was actually mandated. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilman Henderson, please.
Karen, with Form-Based Code, there's not a front setback, correct?
Um, there are in some cases. It depends on what, which zone you're in.
Okay, well, with, with a sixteen-inch minimum, in, in trying to create a handicap ramp, you've got a one and twelve slope, which would throw, in some cases, maybe a building further back because of that, correct?
It could. And you could certainly seek a, a variance based on a hardship for that sort of thing.
Okay, well, that's what I was wondering. I mean, if, you know, if it, somehow you were limited on the distance going back. Um, but really, it, it's just a, well, I guess it is a visual thing, not looking straight into, I guess...
Yeah, it's kind of a privacy thing.
Ground floor. Hmm, okay, that is interesting. Thank you.
Good counsel. My only addition to that, Karen, would be, uh, dealing with any kind of flash floodwaters. Does that, is that taken into consideration, sixteen inches in the original concept?
We, I don't believe that was part of the reasoning with, with the original, um, standard. I'm not aware that we've had any of those issues in the downtown, but it, it could be. That certainly could happen, I suppose.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, the last one here is the protected zone buffer. Um, currently, the lands, or the Form-Based Code requires an applicant to provide a landscape buffer when you're adjacent to a protected zone. And those protected zones are basically your single-family zone. So, there's a list of them there. The A1, R1, RT1, RZ1, R2, RTZ, and RD are all basically single-family zones. Um, even though that is the requirement, certain things are exempted. If you're in an RA zone, which is residential attached, and you're building next to an RD, which is residential detached, you are exempt from that requirement. Also, if, if you're, even if you're in an RA zone, but you're building a detached single-family home, regardless of what zone you're in, if it's detached, single-family, you're exempt. The reasoning behind that, again, was, um, we want, I think the, the council had a concern about protecting some of the existing single-family residences from new higher intensity development coming in. But we exempted, um, a couple things where basically you have a, a like use going in next to another very similar use. The Planning Commission, um, was recommending some, some changes to this. And I'm gonna throw some numbers at you and, but I've got a visual in there, too, so. Um, just to iterate some of the changes between, or some of the differences between the, the zones, um, the front yard setbacks are a little different currently in the RA zone. Um, they're five feet less than in, if you had an R1 lot of record or if you were in an RD, residential detached zone. Um, also, side and rear setbacks, or side setbacks are the same all the way across unless you're next to one of those protected zones. And then you have an additional fifteen-foot setback in that case, um, for the RA zone. Um, another difference to note is that, um, the Form-Based Code zones have maximum building footprints, whereas an R1 zone does not. Um, also, the number of units allowed is a little bit different. In the RA zone, you could have as many as four units on one lot. In the RD zone, in the Form-Based Code, you could have two units. One of those would be the primary residence and one would be an accessory dwelling unit. In the R1, um, you would only be allowed one. So, if you look at that graphically, this shows three lots side by side, each with a different zone designation, which you can see at the top there. Each lot's fifty feet by hundred, fifty feet wa- fifty feet wide by a hundred and fifty feet deep, served by an alley, typical kind of, uh, configuration, especially in the North Shore area. The maximum building footprints are shown in brown. So, based on your, your setbacks and maximum building percentage in some of the, the zones, you could build a building that large on each of those lots. Um, and you'll notice that the RA zone, excuse me, has a little bit deeper side setback than the others, which reserve, results in a, a smaller maximum footprint size. Now, if you add the screening buffer that's currently required in there, um, you see that the middle parcel, in addition to having the regular, um, side setback, would also have to provide the screen and buffer. And those are six to ten feet wide. Um, so the Planning Commission was proposing to remove that requirement and take that out. They felt that that was, um, being a little onerous when you've already got some pretty like uses next to each other. Now, another illustration, another thing to consider is if someone has, um, multiple lots next to each other, multiple adjacent lots, and build multiple, or build a, a building, four-unit building on each of those lots, as they are allowed to in the RA zone, what you end up getting is, say, twelve units in this case, um, right next to a single-family house to the side or, or to the rear. Um, currently, the code will require you to build a buffer around that entire development as you see here in green. Again, what the Planning Commission was re- recommending was to take that buffer away because it's, it's still residential next to residential. One thing that the staff noted, again, this was not a recommendation initially from the staff, it came from the Planning Commission. After we started looking at it, one thing that we just wanted to, to point out again is if you have, um, multiple lots, as in this example, um, you end up, could end up with what in effect is more like a, a residential multi-unit zone because you've got maybe twelve or more units. Um, and if you combine the parking for all those into one parking lot, suddenly you've got a, a larger parking lot backing up to the single-family units. Um, so the one consideration, um, that the staff would like to throw out is that maybe, say, if you have, um, multiple lots like this where you've combined them into one development where it becomes more than just four units on one lot, that, then maybe the, the buffer would remain. Um, so those would be the two differences there. The Planning Commission says, "Let's just get rid of the buffer completely." They didn't feel it was necessary to have that for residential next to residential. Okay, those are the six, um, sorry. And I just had a, a quick recap on the, the goals here. I don't think we really need to go through those again. But again, as John said earlier, after having this over a year, we've had, have thirty-six proposed amendments. Those six really are the only ones that we received any feedback or comments or concerns about and the only ones where the Planning Commission and staff had different recommendations, so.
Thank you, Karen. I'm seeing no other lights. I do wanna make a quick point, though. Um, I would like to officially ask City Attorney to move this to April, our April third agenda as we will have a public hearing next week on this. Um, also, if I, I'll hold my last comment till we conclude. Councilman Henderson?
Karen, go on, let's go back. Uh, this had to do with some of the non-controversial, uh, in non-abutting properties to be considered coming into the Form-Based Code. This is on page six. I guess it's one through six.
Page six of the, the table?
Yeah, this, I guess it is one through six on the item number.
Mm-hmm.
Under A, it says, uh, it'll, it'll be considered if the property is within close proximity to, to me, I mean, it's a little ambiguous, isn't it?
It, it is.
To say it's close proximity?
Right. Um, yeah, the staff talked about this a bit. Certainly, if, if you're immediately adjacent to the Form-Based Code boundary, that seems to make sense. If, if maybe you're only separated by one small lot, it might make sense. But, yeah, the, the further you go away, the more difficult that becomes.
What's close proximity then?
Well, I think that's why there's the, the next criteria says you also have to be within the downtown plan area. So, I think that becomes the outer limit. Um, so, because I think, right, this is one, another criteria talks about, it has to be, is included in the da- adopted downtown plan. So, if, once you're outside that, for sure, it's kinda too far. And, and the reason for that is, you, you, as you know, you got a committee that governs this. It also has a basis for representation in certain districts, right? And if it, the bigger it gets, unless, I don't know, the committee wants to take on more projects, larger area, I don't think so. Um, I think the idea, I think the part of the reason, now, while we're certainly looking at some of the elements of this that work in some of our new zones that we're, we're, we're developing for urban infill, we don't want to just expand this infinite item in terms of the way it's currently set up because the committee structure, Form-Based Code Committee, is set up really for a specific geography, right? Based on certain districts. Um, so I think part of the reason we would need to have some controls on how far it expands is to make sure it, it stays within sort of the immediate downtown area in terms of the way this particular code is crafted. Is that making sense?
Let me be very specific. How does this relate to the North Shore?
So, the North Shore...
And North Chattanooga.
So, it has to be within the downtown boundary, so the, um, plan...
And how far does that go then?
Do you...
I would have to look. It's very similar to...
I didn't, I didn't realize North Chattanooga or North Shore was part of the downtown boundary.
The, the downtown plan, which was adopted in two thousand and four, did extend to the North Shore. I can't remember the exact boundaries, but I don't think it went much beyond the Form-Based Code boundary. In fact, it may have even been smaller. I would have to look at it to be absolutely sure of telling you.
So, are you saying that we may have some of the Form-Based Code that's already outside of that downtown boundary in the North Shore?
I, I think you may because we have a couple fingers that go up Market, North Market Street and up Cherokee, and I don't think we're in there.
Okay, this is for consideration for any expansion. So, so to your point, maybe we'll, we'll take a look at that in a little more detail.
Well, I, I know that partic- there's some streets over on, in North Chattanooga, a- and I think they're particularly, particularly interested in the accessory dwelling units.
Right.
And, and wanting to come into the Form-Based Code in order. And, and we've taken on a few individual cases like that.
Could I add a, a thought, maybe a tool to consider? You know, my staff's working on, um, urban... You know, my staff's working on, um, urban residential infill, like more, a single-family, patterned after Form Base Code, similar, similar approach in terms of thinking about more graphically oriented, that would include accessory dwelling units. I guess my recommendation would be, let us get that, uh, tool in place, which should be, I would say should be complete by, certainly by midsummer. Um, we're hoping, we're, we're in the process of getting the, the tool worked out where we get ready to go to Planning Commission probably sometime in May. I think what I would recommend is we would use that tool for other urban neighborhoods around the downtown area. Just because, I think, again, because this has a, a special committee review process associated with it, I'm a little worried that the bigger it gets in terms of geography, the more hard it becomes for that committee to manage all the cases in that geography. I think that, to me, the better approach is to take some of the good things that come out of this code, apply it to some of our urban residential code types. Um, same flexibility, same, you know, basic, uh, principles, but have a, a, basically have it work within our standard zoning process. If that makes, if I'm making sense.
In other words, it's going to be Form Base Code, but we're not going to call it Form Base Code?
It's in terms, well, but it's a, it's another version of it, right? It, it's, it's, so for example, uh, it talks more clearly about how you have attached, uh, ADUs in the back, uh, talks about massing, frontage, just like anything you would do for a, a, for an urban infill type development. Again, a zoning tool option.
Okay, so going back to close proximity, it would have to still be in the downtown footprint then, to be considered close proximity?
I think that, because that is a criteria, and I think we do need to, possibly want to do some follow-up work on it. Let us look into that, Councilman.
Okay.
Um, and particularly as it relates to the North Shore, I think it's a good point you brought up.
Good, sir? All right, thank you very much for those questions. Um, Karen, I'm seeing no lights. Uh, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Um, just thank you for your patience. I know that's a lot to absorb and some controversial issues. I'm glad we only had six of them, though.
Well, we thank you for the hard work that's been done and to our committee members who have helped. I mean, this is a, a labor of love, so to speak, and we're glad to have the talent that we have that are, that has been working on this. Uh, I'm seeing no other lights. So if I would like, in other business, I would like to say, uh, for the record, that I've asked the City Attorney to put on our April 3rd agenda a resolution to, uh, the RPA to study development policy for steep slopes and the floodplain. So we'll be seeing that, uh, very soon, uh, on April the 3rd as well. Um, seeing no other questions from anyone, we are adjourned to six.